I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting for December 12th, 2023, at 5:56 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you in the audience, we're just going to do the Finance Committee meeting quickly, and then we'll get to the swearing in of the incoming police officers, and then we'll go on to our committee of the whole, and then the common council meeting. All right, um, attendance roll call.
Alder Persons Wolf?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Public meeting notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting from November 14th?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. New business. Recommend approval of a letter of credit reduction for the Glen at Mesquite Lakes LLC.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Recommend approval of a memorandum of understanding for the Mesquite Norway School Resource Officer Program for the 2023-2024 school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Vulture approval?
Recommend approval of utility vouchers in the amount of $247,014.71.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Recommend approval of general fund vouchers in the amount of $673,663.26.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Recommend approval of wire transfers and payroll invoice submittals in the amount of $397,974.79.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. There is no Finance Director's report, any communications or miscellaneous business? Hearing none. A motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 6:59. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole meeting for December 12th, 2023, at 6:13 PM. Attendance roll call.
Alder Persons Wolf?
Here.
Hamill is absent. Terrence is absent. Alder Person Kapusta?
Here.
Alder Person Schrader?
Here.
Kubaki?
Here.
Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. There are no minutes to approve. New business. Pickleball discussion. Adam, you want to start us off?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alder Persons, for having us here. Quick introduction, because I haven't really had the interest, or I would say interest, but the need to discuss anything rec with you guys. Adam Young, Recreation Specialist for the city, specifically with pickleball. We've had pickleball in the community now for going on nine years, and it's an immensely growing sport program. It's a huge program for our department, and we've had some community members that have taken upon themselves to have some high interest on seeing a new facility within the community. So before I introduce them, if you guys have really any questions regarding the community use, any programming, specifically Lyons Park, where our pickleball courts are located, I'd be happy to answer any questions after they introduce themselves and have the idea of what they would like to see through for the community. So we have Mary Jo Foy, Bill Frederick, and John Francis here. They're all community members of Mesquite. Bill will be taking upon himself just to introduce themselves and give you guys their idea of what they'd like to see.
Just quickly, just so they know who they're talking to, can we just introduce ourselves, starting with Eileen?
Hi, Eileen Madden, District 7.
Kevin Kubaki, District 6.
Deb Schrader, District 5.
Rick Petfalski, Mayor.
Hi, I'm Tom Kapusta, District 4.
Rob Wolf, District 1.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Adam. So my name again is Bill Frederick, and I'm here as a pickleball enthusiast. I moved to the community about two and a half years ago, and quickly thereafter began playing pickleball at the OAW facility off of Racine Avenue in New Berlin. There is where I first learned about the Mesquite Park and Rec program. After playing in the winter at the OAW, it was really nice to hear that there was a Lyons Park and, you know, the Park and Rec program. And because of that, I was able to leverage it to improve my skills these last two summers. But I do have to say that I'm at a point where I'm beginning to play elsewhere, and it's because that facility is oversubscribed. The Park and Rec program has been so successful that when I go there as a Park and Rec participant, I find myself spending as much time waiting to play as actually playing. And that just is a reflection of the growth of the sport. I'm a new player. You know, I've only been playing two years, but I can tell you that the number of people playing has grown dramatically over that period of time, and I don't think it's a fad. The sport is very, it's low impact, it's multi-generational, it's engaging, it's fun, it's easy to learn, but yet difficult to master. You know, someone like Kevin might feel the same way about golf. But it's because of that, it keeps people's interest, plus it's helpful from a physical agility, balance, it requires coordination. So it's really a great sport. So I guess what I wanted to also say is that the Park and Rec program, it's oversubscribed even though it turns away people that are new players looking to get in because they got in too late, as well as experienced players. So there's a real opportunity within pickleball, and I would like to say that, you know, other, our neighboring communities are seizing upon that opportunity in that, you know, Franklin is adding new facilities. New Berlin just built that recreation center which has indoor courts. So, you know, Brookfield's adding courts, and I play in Greendale, Oak Creek. The other part about that is there's a downside for my community, Mesquite, is that when I play in these other communities, I'm also frequenting businesses outside of Mesquite. And when I look at, you know, the business community in Mesquite, it seems to me to be struggling. You know, when I go down Jamesville Avenue, you know, we don't have a Sendix, we don't have a Target, we don't have a lot of things yet. So I just think it's good if we can build it and people come, it can help with the business environment. So I think it is worth investing in, and as I said, other communities are doing it, and even Franklin High School has started a pickleball club. So they see, you know, five years down the road, they think it'll be a real sport at the high school level. So anyways, that's kind of summarizing the call for action. But I'm here today representing a new group, the Friends of Mesquite Pickleball, and we'd like to help address this court capacity issue. And so we've presented our vision to the Parks and Conservation Committee and received approval to bring it forward to the common council or council of the whole. So we are here tonight to seek your approval to add a pickleball complex to the city's five-year capital budget schedule, while we simultaneously will be partnering with the city government, you know, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Public Works Department, anybody we need to, in a manner so that we could have a partnership where we can pursue something similar to the Hope Playground at Manchester Park, Park Arthur Field Project 4, Bindi's Dog Park, the American Legion Veterans Park Playground, and really go another step beyond what actually got pickleball off the ground in Mesquite, and that's with Lyons Park. It was a partnership in which there was private funding, and it wasn't just all on the city government to make this happen. So we would be, this Friends of Mesquite Pickleball Group would be interested in having the city's assistance. We'd like to work in collaboration with the city, but to start a public fundraising effort to build this complex. We would be looking to do it in an area of existing property owned by the city, so an existing park, and again, looking for help from the city to determine what's the most suitable location. I can tell you that while we haven't spoken, you know, with the local business community in terms of fundraising at this time because we didn't have your approval, we had been discussing it with the local pickleball players. And so far, we've been soliciting pledges, and we have over 60 individuals willing to make a contribution, and right now, we have pledges totaling about $20,000. So that's really our story, and would be interested if you have any questions now.
Bill, what are you seeing as far as the cost of a facility?
Well, the complex that we're looking at, I mean, right now Lyons Park has four permanent courts and two temporary. We'd be looking at a minimum to double that capacity, and would want a site that would at least accommodate going up to 16 courts total. And that, you need at least 12 just to run a good tournament. So anybody who's looking to run tournaments, they have multiple skill levels, and would need multiple courts for each skill level.
Ballpark dollar cost?
Oh, I didn't answer your question. So the ballpark, what we've seen from proposals or ongoing efforts recently, so Franklin's rebuilding 10 courts, that estimate came in at $430,000. So $43,000 a court today. What we're thinking is by the time this would happen, you know, it's going to be, you know, optimistically, two, three years down the road, we're talking about $50,000 a court.
Adam, do you have anything to add as far as what costs would be, or things that we would, or maybe possible locations, or how much land we need for something like that, that we can educate the council on?
What we have currently, I would assume everyone's familiar with Lyons Park. We're sort of landlocked over there. We're in a neighborhood park. We're seeing some issues as far as, you know, parking with us being very busy, even off of programming times. So I would have high interest on making sure we have it at a location that can host hundreds of people, honestly. It would need to have that amount of space. I would like it to be somewhat centrally located, but that wouldn't have to be necessary. It could really be anywhere in city limits in a park space. Honestly, a few come to mind right off the top of our head would be Moreland Park. That would be sort of centrally located. It does have some space for it. It already has some infrastructure. Some spaces that would be big enough would be, you know, even Veterans Park, but that obviously would probably have a very good mixed use, but it does have space, but something like that, right? So Moreland Park, Park Arthur, Lake Ten, or To Nune Park. I'm thinking of spaces that have ample space to host a complex of potentially 12 courts with a parking lot. So it'd have to be something that big.
Yeah, you mentioned that it's popular. That's one of the reasons why you have so many people participating in it. But what is the main reason why we can't accommodate it? Is it local people, or is it other people coming in? You talked about going out to other communities. Is that the main reason, is other communities don't have this, so they're coming into our community?
Real quickly, Bill. I mean, we've had a program for nine years. It's a little bit more unique than other communities. Right now, we're collecting enrollment for our 2024 season. We already have 180 participants that are signed up through October of 2024. That's majority of residents only. You know, we have roughly, I would say, just now only about 30 non-residents that have signed up for our program for 2024. But that's, you know, roughly, I would say, anywhere between like 70 and 30% residents to non-residents. That has decreased over the years just because we have such high interest within the community. Price points too, and then their communities also have a good program. But over the years, we've seen, you know, people from outside the community want to participate in our program. They like the complex. They like how we host our programs. It's just, you know, the sport's growing so much, and it's not slowing down. We see every community, you know, around us that has a complex, if not two or three, and the courts are busy all the time.
Now, being busy all the time, is that only because your clubs are using it? Are you taking all the time up, or is the community able to, like, walk onto a basketball court and just have a pickup game?
Right. Specifically for Park and Rec, we're really only there roughly four days a week for two and a half hours per timeframe. For instance, like our summer program, so this past year, the schedule is Monday, Wednesday nights, 5:30 to 8:00, Tuesday, Thursday mornings, 9:00 to 11:30. We have some clinics, some beginner open play stuff that we host to bring people in. Outside of the time, which is, you know, has grown over the past few years, people are seeking to be at those courts outside of Park and Rec time. So although we are really busy for our program, programming time, it's honestly even busier outside of our Park and Rec time now. So that's, that's sort of been the change within the sport.
And then you guys are also looking to keep Lyons Park as well?
Yes, for sure. You know, it's a nice complex. It serves a need. More so, it could be, you know, I would envision it sort of just being like a, you know, a community use place where there wouldn't be any programming per se that would, that would be offered there. It would be more or less just some community open space.
And the Lyons Park area is maintained pretty well? I mean, is it, I mean, how are we doing on maintenance and future maintenance for that park? We're right on course?
Yeah. I mean, the complex is honestly, it's holding up well. We've had to put some, some projects into place to maintain it. You know, it failed after a couple of years when we first, you know, did our stuff, but the second project, the courts are really nice. We've added a seating area. We've added the multi-use surface that the community uses outside of pickleball. We use it for our overflow. It's a really nice neighborhood park, all things considered.
There's really not a time you can drive by Lyons where it's daylight and amicable weather that you won't see a minimum of 20 cars there.
Right, right. And yeah, go ahead.
One aspect that I'd like to get across, you were asking about pickup games, and one of the big appeals of pickleball is the social component, and people will use social media, and it's like a flash mob saying, who's interested in playing at noon, you know, on Tuesday afternoon? And, or, I mean, I've seen it where at 9 o'clock on a Sunday morning, and you can have 40 people show up. And
So that's all you need to do is just show up? You don't have to go through Park and Rec and book a timer? Or can you do that as well?
Well, you get priority if you book through Park and Rec. So, but if the court's not in use, you can't have a pickup game. But I just wanted to say that, yeah, are there people outside the community because of the social component, much like I get invited to go to play with people in other spots? It will happen here as well, but that's not the majority of the play. Yeah.
What, you said you've got a, we'll say, a soft commitment right now of 20,000 from just members without really, I think, like, doing any kind of fundraising at all. What do you envision that your group could possibly fundraise?
I would say that we really haven't, we don't, I haven't approached the business community because I wanted to get through this meeting first. And even as we talk with the individual players, it's helpful to know that we have the backing of this
Absolutely. I understand all that.
It would help us, even in that venue. But I would say, we realize this is a project that's going to be in excess of a half million dollars. And so we are thinking that, could we do half?
Okay. And do you think half is realistic from your end? I'm not questioning
I actually, I think we can.
Okay.
But I would have other
I'm soliciting on 3 for 3, but this is all our territory. So I don't know what their dollar amount is, but they're more happy to join.
Okay.
And I've heard that INPRO is interested in pickleball, so
We just can't keep on going back to the same well unexpected.
I understand.
They've been very generous, and they may be in this project. I just always caution people
Well, one of their employees told me that they've actually talked about building a facility on their own grounds
Sure.
because they're that interested. So we haven't spoken with them, who it's hearsay at this point.
Now, this type of facility can grow over the years. So it, to me, it doesn't have to be one block. It can be a growing situation where you put in three or four courts, and, you know, as long as you have the area to expand upon that. Manchester was a 50-50 proposition with, with the young lady, and, and you know, I have talked about this, Bill, and you know you have my support about this, but
We appreciate it.
Yeah. And you could probably fund it yourself anyway, but that's beside the point.
Case closed, Kevin.
So I guess if your, if your, if your mission today is to look for the support, you know you have it for me, I'm not speaking for the rest of the group, but if we could look at this as an incremental proposition over a period of time and not one lump sum, it's a lot easier for the council to swallow, and it's a lot easier for your fundraising efforts as well.
Well, we started it based on the need, and since we haven't begun the effort, we'd still like to go for, I guess, the whole enchilada if we can. But we recognize that we have to make, be able to contribute significantly to the effort. And the more we can contribute and fundraise, the easier it is on the city. So we're going to start big, and if we have to reevaluate things and adjust the plan, you know, it's nice to know that it's possible.
So we, just for the council's reminder, we do have a sponsorship policy that we approved about a year and a half ago, that's on the books, that allows outside interests to sponsor different amenities throughout the city. So we do have some guidelines and framework that we can work with this group on making sure that they don't over-under sell what, you know, what our policy states. It's similar to what the school district has. In fact, it's almost identical to what the school district has because they use their policy. So when they were soliciting funds for like the football field and things like that. So we do have something that they can work with. My, I guess the one question I would have, and we still have to work through how we're going to do that, is say they raise 30, 40, $50,000, and then the whole effort fizzles. That, you know, as far as going back and returning $20 to this person and $30 to this person, we're going to have to have some kind of expectation of, okay, that money will be either put into an account for future use of pickleball, or after a certain amount of time, it's just going to go into recreation of some sort. I don't want to get into the point of where if this fizzles out, that we're going to be returning the smaller individual funds. Larger numbers that are going, coming from corporations, yes, we can work a way of returning that if it fizzles out. But if you're going to be doing, like, say, bake sales or something like that, how do you return that money? So I just want to make sure that we're all on that same page. Alderman and Wolf?
I think what Kevin was touching on, and some of the stuff you were touching on, I think you're more right as far as going for the gusto. It sounds like for it to be successful, you're going to have to have the right ingredients. With that being said, I have to get more involved with this to understand the Park and Rec, and what is valuable land out there for Mesquite, and what would be, you know, good for you, you know, where our future uses would be for like a Park Arthur or something versus a pickleball court. These are all great things we got to understand as a full community instead of a part of a community. But I think you're right. I think, you know, if you're talking tournaments and stuff, you got to do with the 12 courts. If that, you know, you guys, depending on you, you'd be the experts.
Well, again, you know, we can, we can fill the six and still have just as many people or more than, more people sitting than who are playing.
Well, plus the cost of building and all this and everything too, has a lot to do with it too.
So it's not just tournaments. This could be used on a regular basis where you have 10, 12 courts being used all month.
The other thing too is if you do start even with 10 or 12, you do got to have the room to be, as Kevin was touching on, to
Oh, yeah.
expand in the future. But as far as the donations goal, I think that you're right on course with that. But I would say that we would put that money aside for maintaining, if they donated for a cause, it would be for to maintain the pickleball courts that are in existence now. So we can always escrow that rather than put into a general fund.
Sure.
You know, because I mean, that's what the people gave the money for, you know. So I, I mean, there's a lot of good questions here. I just have, I mean, like Kevin's already ready to jump aboard. I don't know if anybody else is. I have a lot of, a lot of other things to understand and, and look at, and look at where our Park and Rec dollars are going and not have been going, and, and look at the, like I said, the use of our lands are, are, you know, a good question that we'd have to talk about.
And Alderman, you bring up a good point. We probably can answer at least a little bit of that through the park, the park survey that we did in the last year or so. What are some of the top requests or wants on that? I don't care who takes this one.
Top five. Dog park, we got that. Always splash pad, it's huge. We got
Where were we looking for a splash pad? Do we still have an idea for that? Was that?
I would say
Veterans. Veterans would be the ideal location.
I don't want to stop you, sorry.
Nope. It's a good question, but that would be the ideal location. We get some things with a pool, very difficult here. Trails are another one. Pickleball is another one. And then bathrooms. It's always, it's a big thing about bathrooms. So those are the top six.
Yeah, and you know, you brought up a couple of good points. I mean, I think the trails, there's a couple of spots that still need to be finished, and with the cost of asphalt. I know that's always been a sore spot with me about spending money and maintaining trails. It's a lot of money. But we have them unfinished. That's a big, big subject. And like you said, bathrooms are huge, and especially for pickleball situations, you know. If you can have hundreds of people, they're going to need bathrooms.
Correct, correct. Exactly right. Looking for a place where you have some type of infrastructure ready, it's more of an ideal situation.
Any questions or comments from this half of the table, besides Alderman and Kubaki? Which you're allowed to talk again, but I just
I thought you were just cutting me off there.
No, not yet.
Probably a stupid question, but I'm assuming these are just outdoor for spring, summer, fall. It's not indoor?
Correct.
Correct. I mean, you want to, obviously, you guys will decide what, you know, what we want to stick our, you know, Park and Rec money, or our parks money into park and rec money or our parks money into. I don't play pickleball, but and I don't play one on TV, but I do see that there it is. Everything they've said about the sport is true. It is something that, you know, if we we want to put amenities in, we want them used. That's why we do them. This would be something that would be used. Touching on something you you asked earlier, yes, it would be used a lot by people outside our community as well as members of our own community. If you go within their own group, they were kind enough to invite me to a really awesome fish fry last summer. I was running into people I knew from Vernon and New Berlin. And so, yes, there's people from all over, but that's how popular it is that people are willing to travel. So if you're getting people from outside your community, you're getting people from inside your community as well. It's, I I don't see a harm in allowing them to go forward on it. It's just we're going to be making a commitment at either for this next capital, well, to at least put it on the five year plan. And, you know, we, I guess we got to, we can kind of put it at a certain date and when our goal is to have this built. And if the fundraising isn't there and if our finances aren't there, you push it off a year. And I mean, it's, it's, it's nothing that would kill us. But I guess I would encourage you to at least accept an outside group trying to supplement some of our own funding to for these amenities.
I I'd like to hold off until we have two more members here to talk about that and 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 try to move it forward from there to hear if they have any.
Well, does anyone, I mean, and we can, we can get more of their input. I guess I I know they're kind of anxious to, you know, start the new year off with, you know, some of this fundraising. Is there anyone who has an objection to it? Because, I mean, even if those two are hardly against it and we got five people here, I don't want to say their vote doesn't count, but it it it's it's not like it's going to sway the sway the tides any. And it would give them opportunity, you know, starting, starting stuff with some of this stuff off with the new year is sometimes, you know, advantageous to to do that right away. At least to get on some some of these businesses' marketing plan for the years.
I would definitely support it, and I think the timeline is going to be based on how the funding comes in. You wanted to put on the five year plan, like you said, and then adjust it according.
So I guess what I would recommend, if if there isn't any objection, would be to allow myself and Scott's department to sit down and set the parameters for them and, you know, show, you know, as far as sponsorship levels, what, you know, so they're not overselling things, what what the expectations will be of, you know, the fundraising. If for some reason this does fizzled out, just kind of get find up the details. We can bring that plan back and then for approval. But in the meantime, we can at least start working on that to get them going on it if you guys are okay with it.
You know, I don't have. I think if you look at this, look at the popularity of it already. I mean, I think that the biggest problem you're going to have is not making sure it's big enough. Because the community is going to be here, the community's support is going to be here. We're not getting younger as a population. And pickleball is just like, it is hot and people want to engage in it. And and some for some communities are actually doing indoor facilities in conjunction with it. So the biggest problem, I think, Meskego will look at and say, hey, we didn't do this big enough as we try to come forward with it. So I think it's a great idea. There's a lot of community support for it all over the place. And I think you have to look at really doing this seriously and doing a good job with it.
Now, you guys mentioned other communities, you said New Berlin, Franklin, Brookfield. I know Brookfield is building somewhere. Are these all public ventures that are being built or these private?
Franklin's public. The. So they have priority, the public has priority in that time. And there's some open time for the public.
Then New Ber, Brookfield's building a new one?
Brook Brookfield's a new one. It's a.
Is that public too?
Public. It's it's through the the city of.
And the New Berlin one you mentioned, you go to, that's, is that a private club or the one on Moreland you said?
It's right off of.
I mean, National?
It's the recreation part.
That's 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 public too?
Yeah, well, that's a public private venture between.
O A W.
No, the one.
No, the the there's the old Walmart by Nat, Moreland and National over there. They're building three courts and it's the rec building that New Berlin's putting in. But at the same time, Burkhart, it's a private public part, P three over there.
The one you're going to now is right on National and.
That's O A W.
Racine, that's private?
Yeah, that's private.
That's a club or something? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a feel for what's going on out there.
Yep.
And then the Rock just opened an indoor facility as well in Franklin.
Yeah.
But Franklin, I know they've got, I don't know how many courts are going in at Frumming Park. But again, they are doing ten at the city hall. And they've got four that just opened up this summer in Pleasant View.
Most of these are all outdoor?
Yeah, these are all outdoor that I'm talking about, other than you should mention the block in Franklin.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, the ones that are private typically are indoor because that's where you can justify charging, membership fees.
And the only other question I would have is is the impact on the budget for Park and Rec? I mean, what is it, you know?
Well, it's got twofold. It's gonna, I mean, for one, it's if larger facilities will allow Adam to expand his park and rec program. So could facilitate and do more programming, which bring fees in. But then you will have, from Ryan's standpoint, of maintenance on it. I don't, that they'll have to speak to.
Yeah, we'll have the basic maintenance on it that we have with Lions Park. You have the capital, you know, we have the five year capital plan for everything. It's up to date. So one, you'll see the initial cost for a capital and then the maintenance of it. I would have to say what maybe every couple of years we have to restripe it. Usually holds up pretty good asphalt because we only have people on it. You know, it's not like you have trucks or or anything, so it can last for a long time. Probably the biggest thing is, you know, then the extra amenities, you know, some shade. But they're just, it's regular maintenance that we have, so.
So we we build these outside, are we looking for bathrooms and stuff with this? That involves the cost of fifty thousand?
No, I would have to say that's just the courts. I would say you 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 want to try to find.
Because I know you, I know you guys want bathrooms. I've heard that already.
So so that's one of the reasons, like, if we did it at Moreland, Moreland Park is due for having facilities added for the skate park, the dog.
There's enough room there?
Oh, yeah, I think so. Yeah. It's a pretty big park, actually.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very big park. You could do the pavilion on the side.
Dog park, right?
Well, it's got dog park. It's got some soccer fields there. It's got the skateboard park.
Skateboard park.
It's got a playground.
Really? There's enough room there? Wow, I didn't realize it was that big over there.
I mean, the park was originally built or bought for the that one community center that was discussed in early two thousands. And there was quite a bit of land there.
Yeah, it's got some buffer between the residential.
Right.
Well, the only other, the other great spot would be Park Arthur because we have a lot of land there, but I don't know. You'd have to tell the difference between all that. I don't know.
My fear would be overloading that park with a lot of high activity between baseball. I mean, if you had pickleball and baseball going at the same time.
I don't think you could, you can't use it on the existing Park Arthur now. I know, we know we have an expansion on the west side, but on the existing portion.
No, 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 not an existing side, on the on the other side.
I'm talking about even the other side, the the expansion side, I would.
Man, we've been sitting on that with doing nothing, so.
Oh, it's gonna, it's gonna be parking at some point.
At some point, it will be, probably, so.
Okay.
All right, so we're we're okay with what I talked about. We'll meet with them, get them, get them going with some guidelines. I'll bring those guidelines back to you guys. We can, if you need tweaking on it, that's fine. All right, guys, have any other questions for us?
No, we'd appreciate that guidance.
All right, first week in January, you want to get together?
Okay, it's on screen.
Okay.
Second.
Second week, second week's fine with me too. First week's short, so. We do. All right, moving on. Scott, road program discussion.
Yes.
Do you have a sponsor for the roads?
I do not. Could you take one and just pass one down, pass them down? Same thing with this one. Yeah. So about four or five years ago, we kind of met with you guys and discussed roads. Ryan went out with the drone. We had like, we took the worst ones of everyone in your districts. So what Ryan and I were thinking about again is, and I started having a couple of conversations with you, is we had to do our road ratings again. Every two years, we had to go rate out all the roads. So that is been out there. We had to turn it into the DOT this year. So what we wanted to kind of do is give you a quick snapshot of what's going on. And then we created a five year plan of where we're going to get the roads done for the next five years. And then in there for the second kind of handout, the first one is the five year plan for all the costs. And the second one is, what do other communities spend on roads and how do we compare to it? So we wanted to kind of give you an idea. So starting, let's just start with how people spend on roads and how we do. If we, I sent out this spreadsheet probably a couple of months ago, and this is kind of the latest one with it. We are one of the lowest ones that spend on the roads compared to our our kind of like neighborhood communities. In between time, I don't have the email, but Alderman Terrance asked about like life cycle cost of our roads. So if you wanted to be like, oh, man, I wish could do it. I wish we could take every twenty years and get us a new road. So we are kind of doing the twenty year life cycle. We have about a hundred fifty two. And and it kind of worked out to us to being, if I remember right, just shy of like sixty years, we touch all our roads. If that works out, if you remember that email, I think I said it was two, we're doing about two point two six miles per year, which is kind of like what we've been averaging from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty three. We have pretty good records. And we have about a hundred fifty two, so our life cycle is about sixty seven point three. So we're about three times the amount of twenty. Now, I think twenty is being very conservative. I I don't think, and Ryan and I, we we need twenty. But we definitely need a lot better than sixty seven point three years. I think all of you have seen, it's probably the most calls that you receive and it's the most calls that we receive about it. So now that you kind of got an idea of what we spend and and how neighboring communities and what our life cycle. Right now, so we rated all our roads. And this is a map showing all the roads that we kind of rated out there. And anything from bright colors, five and up, it's bad. So what we did then was, let's just kind of highlight those areas right now. And as you can see, we got a lot of reds, we got a lot of yellows, and we got a lot of orange. And what's happening is, we're just not keeping up, guys. We we we're we're losing here. So what we need to do is we we need to come up with a better idea of how to do this for our for our roads. And just wanted to kind of like, this is the latest data. Ryan and I spent three days doing this in October, September this year, right? Driving out, looking at, and and you all have your bad spots. You you all do. So we wanted to kind of give you a quick snapshot of like, there there's some some roads that we need to touch. And as we said, we're doing two point two six miles each year. We're now getting into areas where as these roads get worse, we, instead of just doing a mill and overlay, we might have to take it down to full depth, which means we are not going to get our goal of two point two six. Other things, for example, Madden Champions here. That road is probably three lanes wide. And that doesn't show it on that map. I mean, you come in there, guys, I'm going to have to make three passes to get that in there. And that's going to eat up some budget rather quickly. So as we see that the roads are getting worse and as some of these roads are a little bit wider, we are going to get that two point two six is going to get us maybe under two miles. And if we get that, now we're not sitting in the sixty seven point three, we're at the seventies, maybe the eighties for life cycle. So we're not trying to be like, just the bad people keep saying this. It's just that we wanted to kind of show you from our discussion from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, they're not getting better. I guess is the best way to put it.
I think the only answer is to bond. And we've got to come up with a dollar amount that we can bond and a reasonable interest rate environment. Best minds are saying the interest rate should start sliding late next year, maybe third or fourth quarter. So I I just think we have to put together a number. And if that number is thirty million or forty million, something that we can work off of. And we've got a bond for it. That's all we can do.
And and just to let you know why we did the five year plan, just so these are the ones, twenty twenty four area, you know, twenty twenty five, one, two, three, hit it down here. Twenty twenty six here, twenty twenty eight, twenty seven, twenty seven. We, and the cost, we're at seven point eight million just for those five years. And that's kind of the, to give you an idea, we also were planning this stuff so that why I'm handing this out to you is so that when people call and they ask, when are, where are you guys going to be in the next five years? We we have a pretty good idea of where we are. And we're already preparing for, you know, up here for twenty twenty four. And that was supposed to be last year and we had to pull it. And we don't even know if we're going to make it out of there in one year. We we have a feeling that's going to be like twenty twenty four and possibly twenty twenty five. And that will be going out, probably out the bit in March of twenty twenty four already. So just to kind of, and that's one subdivision. That's all, that's all we're kind of touching for next year already.
And I don't, Alderman Kabaki is correct. I mean, there's no way of addressing this the way we are now with with just either using, essentially not borrowing. We either, we're doing it under operating and 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 some capital. We're pulling it on landfill or other revenue sources. But the only way we're going to be able to address this is by committing to doing a certain dollar month number of of borrowing every year for this. I I guess what I'm going to need you to work on would be, okay, what would it look like if we borrowed, you know, three, four or five million dollars each year for, you know, for the next, we just, that's what we're going to do for roads? And how long would that take us to cycle through all our roads? For cost comparison, what is that going to do? For taxes? This is rough, but say a five million dollar borrowing is going to add about twenty eight cents per per thousand onto the tax rate. So just, you know, twenty eight to, say, anywhere between twenty eight to thirty five cents, depending on interest rate on a on a twenty year borrowing on that.
You figure a hundred thousand, thirty dollars a home, at a hundred thousand?
What?
At a hundred thousand, thirty dollars? So if it's a three hundred thousand, it'd be ninety dollars more a year?
Um, no, the average house, I'm saying, would be, the average house would be about thirty dollars. So the average four hundred thousand dollar house.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I was, okay, I wasn't understanding. That's why I was clarifying that.
The average home in Meskego would would get about a thirty, twenty eight to thirty five dollars increase on their taxes.
Well, I can tell you that I get a lot of calls in District One. I mean, we got a lot of older streets there. I don't know what anybody else does. And and the question is, the the thing I always hear is, I don't know when the last time our road was touched. And that could be a patch. It could, you know, I mean, we've done some crack filling, I guess you would call it, right? And it's been a while, but I think Kipling is one of the big ones. We finally snuck in there somehow, which was huge. And a lot of, I got a lot of kudos on that from people. They were glad to see that happen. But I look at this plan through twenty thirty and I only see one street in District One. And I know, I don't know what you guys get, but I know I get a lot of comments about it. And which gets, you know, and I appreciate what you guys did and what we're talking about. And Kevin brought up a great point, other than raising taxes. I look at this and we have sixty five thousand dollars on your big sheet here for crack sealing and twenty thousand for asphalt patching. I I think that number, even before some of this gets added, sorry about that, should be increased on the borrowing side if we're going to borrow. Because I think we could save some of these roads because you're talking about going all the way down the milling. If we wait much longer, I mean, some of these roads have been thirty years since we touched them. And it, you know, it's going to cost us double or triple with the price of gas and asphalt. And you're talking about interest rates coming down. You're talking possibly a quarter percent at the end of the first or second quarter. And that's not going to make a dent in anything, a quarter percent at this point. I mean, we've we've doubled or tripled our interest rates and gas prices have doubled. Not until that all comes down will that make a dent. But my point is, of course, I'm fighting for District One because we, you know, it's been a long time, a lot of those roads. I can say my road, I don't know how long it's been for my road. I mean, you live over there. I don't know how long it's been for your road. But the crack sealing and asphalt patching, I think if we get rid of some of these spiders out there that are starting to get bigger and bigger, I know once you put your trucks out there with salt and plow them, you're going to start seeing more.
So what we've been doing with that sixty five to eighty that Scott has in there for just out of operating that comes out of a separate budget is I've been taking the, let's say, six, seven and eights and crack sealing those to get the the life out of them. Because what I can do on a a road like Fleetwood, that could chew up thirty thousand where I can go in something we did in two thousand sixteen, like Parkland, we cracked seal that this year. I got all of Parkland. I I think we did like four, four to five, almost six lane miles this year. So there's that balance where I can chew it up real fast and say like, we did it just to appease. Or we can look at the roads that we've done from maybe like fourteen to now and keep maintaining them so that they stay sixes and sevens and they don't go all the way down to threes.
down to threes. It's just to the point now to where, like Scott mentioned, we can go out and do all the patching in the world, but it's... You're just kind of delaying the inevitable. I mean, it's just, we're failing. And like, we were kind of treading water, and now we're drowning. So...
I'm sorry.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Just to go back to what you said, Alderman Wolf, I mean, like, you look at these spots, just going through districts, I mean, Fulton's not even on here. Through 30, it's not even on the radar. I mean, Lanin South, Hillendale South, Kelsey, all the champions, Old Loomis. I mean, that's... That's not even on here. And we're not even gonna touch it. So you look at that stuff, and like, what can we do to some of these roads? Yeah, Kelsey, we could probably patch and get the rideability up, but we're gonna probably stick 45,000 into it, maybe 50, just for that stretch. Knowing that in five years, it should just be replaced. I mean, it could be replaced now.
Well, I guess what I'd like to see is going along those lines is to create a program. I don't know if it's a five-year program or a 10-year program, to take a look at what we are able to do each year, starting with, of course, with the biggest need, and to create a bond ladder so we can get an idea of how that is gonna affect the taxes over a given period of time. So I mean, we can talk about an individual subdivision, but let's look at the big picture and say, what's the most important right now and next year and the year after that? What can we realistically do? And start to take a look at what the numbers we need to generate and what the ramifications are gonna be for the tax bills.
Yeah, and to go back to Alderman Wolf's point, too, like, just our equipment running over, plowing. I mean, we notice more breaks and stuff like that. I mean, it's just, it's a trickle-down effect. And obviously, we're not gonna fix this in five years, but a plan would be nice.
And we really just gotta come to a philosophical agreement of how we're gonna tackle this and, you know, and what our comfort level is. And unfortunately, the answer is gonna increase taxes, and it's not the only thing on our radar. I mean, we're... I'm gonna be starting discussions next year with the fire department on what our long-term plan is on that. I mean, that could easily be another, you know, couple million dollars. It's gonna be a referendum when we do it, because we can't just, we can't increase our operating at will. We have levy caps, and there's no way you could fit a fire department under levy caps, so that's gonna be something going in the community as well. No one likes their taxes going up, and, you know, you can never say your taxes are, you know, too cheap. Our taxes are dramatically lower than anyone else's around. I mean, it's dramatic. I mean, it... So, and I'm not saying because of that we should raise, but I think they're dramatically low because we've been neglecting some stuff over the years. You know, we've been getting away with just a volunteer rescue squad. I mean, fire, we're pretty well still covered on its rescue that we're having an issue with. You know, our roads, yeah, we haven't been spending money on roads. Well, that's part of the reasons our taxes are cheaper, but now it's time to pay the piper in some of the stuff. We have a very, very skeletal staff overall throughout the city on things. You know, I am very involved in the League of Municipalities, and I talk to other municipalities weekly throughout the state. And they are shocked on how we are so fortunate to be able to get value out of a dollar compared to what they are. But we're getting to the point where we are gonna have to start making some adjustments. And you've all looked at our budget. There's not like we can cut something relatively easy to find money for this, so the only way is up. On the other... And the good side of it, I think the things we're talking about, you know, fire and roads are stuff that the community understands and, for the most part, would endorse. We just have to do a really good job of communicating to them and why we're doing it.
And on that note, I always say, we're not like other communities. We don't want to be like other communities.
No, I don't.
So, yeah, I just want to clarify that, because I take pride in not being like other communities, so... And there's understandable needs as well, so.
Yeah, and I think that was part of, that was my message, is we aren't like other communities. I talk to everyone across the state, and, you know, we're the envy of a lot of them. So, and I don't want to ruin that, but we do have to make some adjustments, because part of the reasons that, you know, we have this benefit of low taxes is because we're simply not paying for things we should be. So what do you want from us?
I'm just one of you guys that start thinking of ideas and thinking outside the box, like Oliver Sienkabaki said about bonding. We're just looking for ideas. We're presenting to you what we presented kind of like four or five years ago and saying, what do you guys want to do? If you want me to come up with a plan, I can find up... Guys, I can get numbers, and we just give you a five-year plan real quick. We did that in a month, showing what our budget is based off of what we spend each year. Okay? If you want me to go higher and give me a limit of how much to spend a year, we can break it down, and I could just expand that out. You know what I mean? That's not the hard part for me to do. I just need some type of direction so that I'm not wasting our time to do that.
So why don't you do this? Unless somebody's gonna object to this, what? Say, by April, come up with what an additional two, three, and four million dollars a year would do for our overall road program, and this would be an annual thing of how we... Would that be able... How far would that get us? You know, because ideally, I'd like to get to the point where we are just resurfacing roads, and we don't have to rebuild them, because it's a heck of a lot cheaper.
It is.
A heck of a lot cheaper if we can just resurface and wait until they completely deteriorate. Because a rebuilt road, what, you get 20 years out of a resurfacing 10, but it costs four times as much to do a... It costs four times as much to rebuild a road versus resurfacing, so, I mean, the math doesn't make sense to wait that long.
Yeah, and that's kind of the direction. I will look at two, three, four. I think for lifecycle cost, 20 is being very conservative. Washington County just saw that they came out with 25. I think if we shoot somewhere between right around 30, that would be a reasonable thing